All right, it's seven o'clock. I call the meeting to order and I'll turn it over to you, Alice.
Okay, thank you. So this is the meeting of the advisory budget committee along with the select board. And tonight, first I'm those of the cemetery trustees and I understand they're not coming.
Yeah.
Then second, we have the agriculture commission. Is somebody here representing them? No, Eric's not here either. All right, then why don't we go right with the energy commission? Hi, Sharon. You want to come up and talk to us about what you guys need tonight?
I can do it right now.
That's good.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Sharon.
It's not raining at the moment, just in case you wanted to know. Okay.
I'll fix it. I'll just don't say a word.
First of all, I want to say that we have not spent the money that was generously given to us last year. And we haven't spent it because it takes a pile of research to know how to spend it. And so we've been doing research based on our report by, what's his name? Clay Mitchell advising us to go for the lighting, go for the lighting first because that is the most steady market right now. The value doesn't change that much and so forth. So we've been doing that and we've been looking for a way to do one of our main goals, which is to help the towns, the town save money on energy kinds of resources like lighting. And you'll notice we all have fluorescent lights here throughout and they're nice and comfortable and so forth. But they don't last that long, not nearly as long as LED lights do. LED lights are a little bit brighter, so I don't know, you might not even need quite as many as you have fluorescent lights. And the good part is that you can put the LED lights right into the same fixture. And we had heard from one group of people that came through that we wouldn't have to take the ballast out. We could just leave it in there. But we have an example of an LED light at the foot of the stairs on the first floor. And he was one of the electricians that was coming to talk with us. He was reaching around up there trying to avoid the ballast that was there and get the ballast in that you have to have in for the LED lights. And he advised us it'd be easier, just take it out, you know, and then I can do a better job. Because I guess he already thinks he's getting a job. We have talked with several electricians and we've talked with several companies. The New Hampshire Co-op has a, what looks like a pretty good deal, where you get about 50% off really of what it would cost when solving yourself to buy them and solve it yourself. And they come and they do it in a day or two, you know, as quickly. They can do them all at once, so you're not bothered with trying to go, let's see, that was a little dim. Probably need to take that one out next week, you know, things like that. And he does, one electrician has a way, a place to dispose of the fluorescent lights because one of their main goals at the New Hampshire Co-op is to get people to use LED lights. Everybody is using them if they possibly can. And so it might save us a lot of money in the short run, but also in the long run because they last at least twice as long as the fluorescent lights do. So anyway, that's probably enough of that. But we also have just received a proposal from Revision about putting solar energy on the roof of the building panels. And I thought it was just on the roof, but then I looked at their diagram. It looks like they're thinking of putting it out from the building rather than on the building. I don't know, I couldn't read the diagram very well. It's very plain, but I'm not a diagram reader. So I just got it today and we'll be looking at that. And then there's also possibility that the town could do everything themselves if they want to. It'll cost you money, we'll tell you that, but it's not as good a deal really in terms of money. So we're working with those three ideas. Julie has been incredible. She helps us so much. I'm glad to know you, you know, because we're all amateurs at this and she knows lots of stuff. So we have looked also toward the capital fund.
Capital Improvement Plan.
Capital Improvement Fund at her suggestion. And she's been rolling a letter to see if they would even entertain the replacement of lights with LED lights as a capital kind of expense. So it's up to us to find out all the good ways to tell them that this is going to save everybody money. Everybody's going to like it. So anyway. Another project that we had going on for quite a while is the swap shop. And we thought at first, we're going to pick the swap shop up and set it over here. And no, Toby is the new manager there and he had some different ideas. And I can pass this around, you sort of look at this diagram and see what he has in mind. But basically, he wants to make the waste, the metal waste building and the swap shop be right side by side. Actually, the swap shop looks to me like be part of that building. And then there's an extended area where people can bring their stuff. And we were looking at, we were saying, well, you know, that's $5,000 that was given to us by the town to work on this. And we want that money to go for energy saving, not just building materials. So I think that Toby knows that, he understands that. And we're going to talk some more about how can we do that. So heating the building and there are several ways to do it, but some are more expensive than others. And when you get there and you see what a small area it is that he wants heated, you begin to think, do we really need one of these great big pumps, you know, to do everything? Or do we need something smaller and cheaper? So we're going to talk to him about it and see how we might do that. We want everything well insulated because it's number one, you know, easiest thing to do. And the lighting will take care of our budget for him. And, but he's very excited about it. We've got to name it after him, the swap shop. Okay.
Toby's swap shop.
And then the third thing that we've been working on, we learned that the office in the recycling center is either hot or cold unless you turn on a window air conditioner and keep it cool in the summer. And it's just not a very pleasant place to work. And it costs money to plug in those air conditioners. And maybe if we, and we're getting somebody, we want to do a door test. Don't ask me to explain the door test. I don't understand it very well. But it's a test to see where the insulation should go if we insulate that office and the hallway. And so I think we should probably do the test for that. And it's been recommended to us that we do the test for everything, you know, that we want to do and include heat energy along with light energy. But it may be a little bit too much to do it for all the buildings this year. So we also have some money for outreach and contingency operating funds and so forth. And we are also engaged in writing a warrant article that sees that the town wishes to learn a lot more about offshore energy and how we might benefit from an offshore energy platform. And we're talking about wind energy. And I understand from a poster that I'm having made anyway, that you can stand on the shore and by the time you're looking at the Isles of Shoals, even a little bit beyond it, which is about six, eight miles out, the sails that you're seeing on a sailboat begin to look very small. They're not one of these great big things that you think you're going to see exactly the same no matter where you are. And so that's kind of an important concept because people care about our little tiny coastline and the view and they don't want that destroyed. And so it's also important that we're on the Atlantic Flyway for birds and they can get caught up in the blades of the wind energy platform. So there's a lot more to do on that, to learn about it. And we are planning programs for the public to learn more about it. In fact, one of them is taking place unfortunately on what we found out is Halloween night in Lee, on the 30th at the church. I'd like to invite all of you to come. And it's seven o'clock though, Halloween is over at seven. So you could just drop your kids off, let them eat candy until they're stocked. And then come to the energy program which is at the church. And we have one of our locals talking to us about ways to save energy that don't cost you any money. Well, not very much. And also Mr. Ralph from Hollis, New Hampshire is coming, who's had a lot of success in his town saving energy in various ways. And then someone representing Revision is coming to talk, which is one of the energy companies that we've been working with this year. So I think it'll be interesting. There'll be a panel. There's time for questions. And it's the beginning of probably, oh, two or three more of these. We're not going to impinge on Thanksgiving however, and Christmas, so it'll probably be after the first of the year. So the budget requests that we have this year, which I need to get to. We didn't ask for very much money because we have all this money to spend and we want to spend it and we don't want to worry about spending more when we're really very busy with the things that I outlined. And we thought that outreach activities should be a focus for 2018 and we should do a lot more of that. And it doesn't cost very much money usually to do outreach. And it's fun. We enjoy it. You can come and help winterize the library or something. We've done that for a couple of years. And also on whatever operating costs we have. So we only asked for $1,500. And again, Julie helped us think that through and thought maybe we could get by with not very much money for the next year. So thank you very much for listening. You know how I like to talk. So I'll stop unless you have questions.
How's David? How is David, your husband?
As far as I know, he's all right, but we're having the worst time in our marriage because we're supposed to be getting ready to vacate our house and move into a much smaller place. And he says, oh, let's just wait until we really know we're going to move. Well, then they give you a couple of months and I'm saying, oh my God. Anyway, that's the household picture.
So Eric, how about you?
How about me?
Yeah.
Can I use the?
You may. You can use whatever you want.
Sorry, this is the last meeting, but I had two other engagements at the same time at the same night, so didn't make it. But essentially, the ag commission is asking for $1,000. We have around $4,500 in budget right now. And the farmers market has a vote, 1,700 I guess. Those are accumulated funds, but we have talked for years since the last master plan. It was in the last master plan. One of the things that we wanted to do was sort of mark into an informational kiosk, if you will, or some sort of informational center for people in the town. Started the concept was to have a welcome wagon for Lee residents here on agriculture. We said, well, we can do it for agriculture, let's do it for all the commissions and committees. Because people are constantly asking about conservation, where are conservation lands? Where can you hide? Where can you do this? Where can you do that? Recreation stuff. So that's been on the plate for a long time. It's sort of been on the back burner though because we're waiting for the select board to make a decision about the town center. And that would depend on where we want to put, what that depends on is where we're going to put this thing. So right now, we're actually leaning not towards the town center, but maybe down at Little River Park because that has a lot more people and have some sort of an informational, I'm going to call it a kiosk, but center that focuses on all of the different commissions in town and all of the materials that they have, information materials they have for the townspeople and for people that come to Lee. So we've been sort of keeping that on the back burner as a project. And I'm not sure of the cost. We're actually talking about that in our next meeting, next week. And try to come up with some costs of what we're envisioning. There are a couple of other projects. We normally have to have a little bit in the bank for the Lee fair. We have a project in the spring because of the chicken barbecue and pig roast. In the spring, we have been doing a fundraising campaign breakfast in combination with the Durham Ag Commission and Stratford County Farm Bureau for their youth and agriculture grant program. We don't get anything back from that. We do provide a few things to make it go. Manpower. We now have accumulated a number of cooking machinery, utensils, whatever. So one of the other things that has come up lately is, as some of you may know, we've been having a problem at the fair now because it's away from everything else. We need refrigeration. So we've been thinking, another back burner thing is let's look for some sort of mobile refrigeration that we can use for the fair barbecue, but also some of the other groups can use it for refrigeration. And we've been renting up a unit in the last few years. This year, another fellow and I bought a unit and I'm not sure how long that's going to last. But anyway, so the $1,000 is earmarked for some specific projects, mainly what we do with this informational kiosk. And the farmers market, which is sort of under the auspices of the ag commission, is going to have some expenses. They've sort of changed up how they're doing things and putting a lot more into advertising and possibly getting some entertainment in it that may have to be paid for. So they are probably going to spend some of that money down in the coming years. Questions?
Eric. I saw in the newspaper that Durham was considering reducing theirs or closing theirs because people weren't attending. I don't know, in terms of, I'm not there every Thursday. I was quite devastated when the Whoopi Pie lady didn't come back this year. I have kind of like been on strike for the farmers market because of that, so.
Do you think you needed Whoopi Pie?
No, but I share them with other people. How about that? I don't know, in terms of what were you guys seeing in terms of people coming? And is that a concern for you guys going forward or?
For the market, I mean. Good question, Scott, because last year, this was the 10th year of Lee Farmers Market this year. And in the last couple of years, a lot of the farmers markets around the state, and which I think there are 122 right now, or there were 122. Some of those have fallen by the wayside partly because the newness has worn off. People have to make a special effort to get there. There are other places to go. It's the weekday markets that have suffered the most. People just can't get there in time. So, and then there's a lot more stuff going on, the weekend markets. So those have become more of a destination type market where people just go and hang out during the day. But, so the Lee Farmers Market decided this year we're going to try it out and see. They added some vendors, craft people, because they thought that, well, some of the comments in the past have been, you need more stuff. You need to have more stuff. And people always say you need more stuff. But the problem is if you get too many vendors there, then nobody makes any money because it gets diluted if they're vending the same thing. And people like to have some variety. And so this year, Tina has been the market master this year and she's tried to get more craft type vendors in and baked goods and things like that, which have been successful. So they did meet last week and decided, yes, they're going to go forward. And things are actually, I think the market was up this year for everybody. It's not that way across the state, so, or across the country for that matter. Everybody, I talked to some people from USDA a little while ago and they said it's a national problem. So it's just one of those peaks and valleys and you've just got to keep changing up to what people want.
Will the lady come back? I'll put it in the word. Yes, Tina gave you the bad news. It says, where is she? And Tina says, oh, she decided not to come back. So I was like, oh.
The problem with that is that, and there are people, I mean, there are vendors that we've had that when we started out, that now have not, decided not to participate anymore only because they've grown enough so that they're going to some of the bigger markets. They can't afford to spend the time. And some of the other markets, for instance, where Lee is an independent market, a lot of the other markets like Durham are actually sanctioned by the Seacoast farmers markets. So you have to go to three markets. And most of the people pick a weekend market because it's a big market. So the other markets, for instance, on Thursdays, the Exeter market is a pretty big market and they meet at the same time or they are holding there at the same time we are. It's a difficult situation partly because you have to have, it's all site specific. You have to have the right location. You have to have traffic and you have to have what people want. Then you've got to have the vendors, for instance, well, I could say who it is because I'm not sure they're going to come next year or month. But a couple of vendors have said, you know, we're just getting, it isn't, we don't have the time. We can't afford to pay somebody to come and we've got to, it takes a whole day to get ready for our market. We've got to get ready for the next market. Or we've had a market the day before and we're not sure what we're going to have left over. And some people will just get burnt out. Getting the new people in all the time is what we're shooting for, is to get younger people in that are going to be there for a while.
Well, I made a point of visiting the market a lot this year and I thought it did very, very well. It did. I had some very good vendors there and had a lot of, if you would, variety. I mean, we had a knife sharpener there. He stayed busy. The baker was new and excellent.
They didn't have Whoopi Pies, so.
Huh? Well, I know, but I didn't see a lot of people going around complaining about the Whoopi Pie issue. So, you know, but, so yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. You folks are from West River, right?
I'm from Lower YA.
Yeah.
And from Community Action Partnership.
And you're Ready Rides. I want to do Ready Rides because theirs is very brief, I hope, right Fred?
Oh, is it?
Yeah. So they don't have to sit over the whole lead.
So Ready Rides is a nonprofit organization. We provide transportation to people over 55 years old and to the disabled to their medical appointments. So this year, we had 21 people in Lee who were registered with us. And during the last, during the year, last, this past fiscal year, 17 of those 21 used our service during the course of the year. We gave a total of 95 rides for those 17 people. When I say a ride, it's a, a round trip would be two rides. So I guess we're at 47 and a half total round trip rides. We have three people from Lee doing some of the driving. So obviously, people from outside of Lee are also driving some Lee residents as well. In addition, our sister agency, Seacoast, gave 50 rides to people in wheelchairs from Lee. And so I think you have our requests in there if I understand it. If you happen to answer any questions, we have.
Senders, administration?
It's after the purple newspaper?
Yeah.
Administration.
It's back here in August or last month.
Administration.
Can I ask a question? You gave us a number of rides. How many individuals?
17, 21 are registered. 17 of those 21 actually used the service this past fiscal year.
And is that, how is that compared to previous years?
Pretty stable. We're looking for drivers, so if you have anybody that has some free time, they can do it once a week, five times a week, once a month, three times a year. We're always looking for people that are willing to do some driving. Thank you very much.
So do you have that posted somewhere or how to contact your folks or whatever?
It's in the, it's in the electronic mailing that goes out every month.
Ecray?
Ecray. It's in the Ecray every week.
Every week. And it's posted, posted, I think, in the church. There are spots around town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
So, who did you say you were?
Community Action.
Oh, why don't we do Community Action next? I haven't seen anybody from Community Action recently.
Well, I am new. I'm Kristen Welch. I'm the Director of Advancement there. So nice to meet all of you and thank you for all your support. So we are requesting $2,000 again, same as last year. Community Action is an anti-poverty agency. We serve all of Stratford County. We serve about 10,560 households a year. That's what we served last year. We provided last year over $10 million in goods and services to the community. In Lee specifically, we served 102 households and provided almost $60,000 worth of service. Prior to the start of the meeting, this gentleman here was saying how there are homeless people living in their cars and that is what we do. That's our work. So we work with people who are homeless. We work with people who are hungry. We work with people who are in need of employment and job training. We provide early childhood education through Head Start. Provide fuel and electrical assistance so that people can stay in their homes and not have to live in their car. So really, we provide a whole gamut of coordinated services that allow people to break the cycle of poverty and be self-sufficient and financially stable and not, you know, not rely on the towns and things like that. The bulk of the services that we provide in Lee are mainly fuel and electrical assistance. We assist, we do assist people who are homeless, but the bulk of our services for their town is fuel and electrical assistance. And as I said, that allows people to stay in their home so they're not having to do things like keep the oven on at night that are dangerous and not safe. We also help people during the application process for those services. We help them budget so that, you know, they're not just getting a handout from us. We're, you know, working with, hey, you need help with your electric bill. Why is that? What can we help you do to make it so you don't have to keep coming back?
I'm sorry to interrupt. You're absolutely right. I am absolutely amazed that the number of people that just, they're where they are because they don't know how to. because they don't know how to manage the money they have. I mean, if you ask them, they're, they're without food, and the kids without food, and ask them what their cable bill is. And I, I mean, it's just unbelievable. They're going without food to watch, to watch cable TV. They're going without heat to watch, you know, to have a smartphone that has twenty-seven apps on. It's just, they really need help in how to manage money.
And we really do try to help people with that. I mean, we don't want to be an organization that's just giving people, you know, we've, there's an application process, people have to provide us a tremendous amount of information to be able to access our services. So we're not just giving it to people, they have to really demonstrate to us that they are in need of the service, and, you know, we work with them to make it so they don't have to keep coming back from us. And really, our, our goal would be that we don't need to exist, because there is no poverty, and that will probably not happen, so, here we are. So I don't know if you have any other questions for me, and the organization, or...
Yeah, I think it's a great investment.
Thank you.
So this, yeah, this goes directly towards Lee residents that you're helping?
Yep.
Already?
Yeah, exactly. So all of the, all of the funding that we receive from towns goes into our operating budget to help leverage the federal funds that we get. So every dollar we receive from the municipalities lets us leverage about eleven dollars in federal funding, so your dollar's really going a long way. It really helps us a lot, and helps the people that we serve, so...
But you did spend fifty-nine thousand nine hundred...
On Lee residents, last year, yeah.
Last year.
Correct. That's the value of the services we provided to, to your town.
Yeah, to follow up on Slip and Browns, we had the superintendent of the school district in last month, and he said, I believe, he said there was like six homeless kids in the district, so I assume that you helped them in some way, if you know about them?
If we know about them, absolutely. So the whole, the services that we provide for people who are, who are homeless or facing homelessness, we have where the, we're what's called coordinated entry. So CAP is actually the single point-of-entry system for all of the homeless shelters in the county. So if somebody's homeless and they call, you know, for example, 211, or they're looking for that resource, they're directed to us, and then we have this huge board in the office where we have all the shelter openings, and, you know, who can go where, and we work to coordinate that with the shelters. So if we, if we know about somebody, we, they would absolutely be on the, this is a really busy time of year, it's getting cold, people who maybe were living in campgrounds and tents during the summer, they can't do that now. So this is really, really busy right now, trying to place people in shelters and, and things like that. And then we also have a homeless outreach worker, and her job is to, you know, go out into the woods and work with the police departments, and try to find people who are unsheltered homeless, and provide them with what they might need to stay warm and survive during the winter months. There are some, there are a number of reasons why someone might not be able to use, be in a shelter, they may have a criminal record, they may be using, substance-using. So for those folks, we try to do what we can to make sure they're at least safe. And we have really good relationships with the police departments in the, in the county to, when they see somebody, they'll call us, and she'll go out and try to work with them.
It's, it's, it's just unfathomable. We, we, you know, we have people that are hungry in Lee, we have people that are homeless in Lee, we have people that are just in deep, deep trouble, and it's just hard to believe that living in Lee, because, you know, when you look around, it's so, I don't know, what do you say, just a high quality of life, you know?
So hopefully, we're helping some of your residents, and...
Well, it looks like you are.
Yes. Do you have any other questions for me?
Do you have a card?
I do have a card, and I brought you some annual reports as well.
I'll get it tomorrow.
Can I come give it to you? Okay, well, I didn't want to talk to him.
Dude, I do sometimes.
And if she reaches out to me, I can put her in touch with whomever, you know, whatever she's looking for.
Is your contact information in here, or any?
Mine is, yes, there's, so, the, um...
Oh, there we go.
That's my, that's my information, and then there should be in there.
Excellent. Oh, thank you.
Well, I don't know, you know, when people arrived or anything, I don't, who are you representing?
Meals on Wheels.
Oh, all right, I'll talk to us, please.
Do you have my load in here, please? Yes, I think it's in the bag. I will just say, as you may have prepared to cover this anyway, this is the first request for Meals on Wheels for funding, certainly since I've been here. I don't know whether it's forever, but certainly for the last six years, they have nominated the requests to the town.
First of all, let me introduce myself, I'm Jamie Shang, and I am the Director of Strapping and Fishing Meals on Wheels. And yes, this is my first time making a request to the town of Dayton. For a little brief history, I came on to go with this program in January. I come from actually Rockingham Meals on Wheels, where I worked for twenty-nine years. One of the reasons we are here today is because this agency has been struggling for a while, and that's one of the reasons I've come on, to, to strengthen it and be able to help the people that we've been helping continue. Last year, we helped twenty-three Lee residents, we provided three thousand one hundred and fifty-six meals, and along with that is what we call our support services, which includes a daily safety check. What that's about is, every time we deliver a meal, we go in, we have our, drive this train to sort of assess the situation. They don't spend long there, but they talk a few minutes with the senior, the disabled adult, make sure that things seem normal, like Mrs. Smith is, usually comes dressed and all kind of happy, today she's, doesn't seem very strong, she's in a dirty bathroom, whatever, things like that, that we can bring back to our administration and supervisors, who then will work with the emergency contacts, or their caseworkers, or whatever the scenario is, to preempt things. So one of the things that we, you know, try to promote to people is that not only are we helping that individual directly, we're helping families, because in this day and age, there's not very many families that can have a single income in their household, so everybody's working, so they're, you know, they're needing assistance to help take care of the kids, as well as their elderly. So we give them that peace of mind, as well as by preempting things early, sometimes we can keep things where we don't have to call in your emergency services. And, you know, the other piece of what we're trying to accomplish with this program in particular, is allow people to keep their dignity, stay independent as long as possible, because, you know, nursing homes are important, they are there for a reason, there are people that need it, but we don't want to be putting all our elderly in there sooner than they need to, just because maybe mobility issues, let's say they're wheelchair-bound, they can't necessarily get to the store, they don't have local family, they can't necessarily stand at a stove and cook or anything like that, those kind of reasons. That, to me, is too soon to rush people into that. Based our request on the fact of that, of what it costs us in the town, our program is also a match program, and one of the issues that this agency hasn't been doing as well as it should, and, you know, I came on board at BICs, is they were supposed to be raising local funds to match. The state and federal contracts give pace about fifty-five percent of the cost per meal up to a cap, and then we're supposed to raise the other thirty-five, and they hadn't been doing that, and that's why the program had been slowly kind of diminishing. We need to do that, and that's why I'm starting to go to the towns this year and talking to people, and asking, not be in front at all, but to contribute if you could, if you feel we're of value to your residents, to contribute and help us keep helping them. I can keep going, or I could stop with questions?
So from where do you work, I mean, from where do the Meals on Wheels come from?
Okay, that's a good question. First of all, our administration office is in Summersworth. We have three, well, technically four sites, but three main sites, one in Dover, one in Summersworth, and one in Rochester. From there, the meals been catered, we coordinate with a caterer, because we want to make sure we get a dietitian involved, and the meals meet one-third of the IDA and all that kind of requirements. The caterer delivers the meals in bulk to these sites, we package it up there, and then we have a bunch of drivers that go out to the surrounding areas. So like your area is covered mainly out of Dover, our Dover facility. At those centers also is an opportunity for mobile seniors to be able to go in and eat there. So there's also some people that come in and participate there and have dining meals together and socialize, like in the Summersworth location, have bingo, you know, things like that. But I will tell you that primarily Meals on Wheels, at least this agency, is probably about eighty percent homebound. It's much bigger demand than it is the concrete people. But if someone is, you know, we have an intake process to go in and certify them, and check on their needs, see, we'll also make referrals of those other services that we think could be useful to them, and that determines whether they are eligible for the homebound. If they're disabled adults, besides being the disability, and they're under the age of sixty, we have to have income requirements. And when I was just figuring out, for another grant, I was trying to get, I think I had to give, it was either sixty-four or sixty-eight percent, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on that, of our clientele make under one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars a month. So we have a very high percentage of very low-income seniors that we're helping, and disabled adults.
So you mean, if somebody makes fifteen hundred dollars a month, you can't help them?
If they're over sixty, I can. If they're under sixty, unfortunately, we don't have funding for that right now, maybe someday in Rockingham, I had so much funding built up over there, I was able to help even those people that fell through those cracks. Right now, we're not a strong enough agency to do that, so I gotta focus on my core groups right now. But maybe, you know, I was there twenty-nine years, I'm here, not even here yet, so give me time.
I'm sorry, where is the, where, where do you get the food from, the raw food?
It, we have a caterer that we contract out of Manchester area, and they put it together. One of the reasons you do, we like to do a catering, first of all, is there's so many restrictions on food safety and keeping everything safe. Then, of course, like I said, the nutrition guidelines. And the last thing is, we're doing, on average, I want to say, four hundred and sixty meals, I believe it was, a day. So like, some people ask, "Well, why don't you use like food pantry food?" Getting that much volume, meeting the traditions, you know, requirements and all stuff is very difficult. Food pantries have a lot of good food, but it's just, it's like a little bit riceier, that, you know what I mean? And you have to make it all unified, you know, so it's easier to deal with a caterer and coordinate with them. And like I said, right now, the one that we dealt with is in Manchester.
Well, I can tell you, I have an elder, very elderly sister out in Arizona, who, we got a phone call one day that said, you know, she just wasn't doing right, and took her to the hospital, and they said she's not eating right, 'cause she wasn't taking the time to cook or do anything else, you know. So we, we called Meals on Wheels and put her on Meals on Wheels, and, you know, she just really blossomed after that, as far as getting healthy, versus where she was when she just wasn't taking the time to cook anything or eating anything, whatever, so...
That's nice to hear.
What the program does is fantastic, just from a health point of view and form.
Well, that's it. When we try to focus on physical and mental health, you know, I mean, because it's, it's partly about the food, but it's also partly like, there's, you know, we're, we're about to do our annual surveys again, and there'll be clients on there that will say that, our drivers, they only see all day long, sometimes multiple days, so that can get, become very isolating. So that's, you know, the interactions are very important. Just for you to know, too, also, I haven't had time, since I've been here, to connect with your welfare director, if you have one, we don't have a problem relaying stuff out, like it's, like, for example, I remember the year after all the flooding issues, some of the towns wanted to get some more strategic planning out with their seniors, because they don't always know. The good thing about our agency is that we build a real strong bond with these seniors, and a lot of times, even though you may know them from tax codes or whatever, they don't always connect to their community sometimes, these more isolated ones, but we, they, they build a trust with us. We're bringing food to them every day, very comfort, you know, basic necessity things, so they, they're more receptive if we bring them, "Here's some information about this going on in your town, you know, here's that." They're a little more open with it, you know, like we've actually, again, with my former program, we've coordinated with fire departments to get firemen in there to just kind of assess situations, to help make sure that smoke detectors are up to date, or whatever, and stuff like that. Again, preemptive stuff, you know, so we're very willing to work with towns and welfare directors and whatever, on things they feel like they want to do for their seniors and try to help them.
So are you allowed to share the names of your clients with the fire department?
Not, what we have to do is, is you have to go through the person, the client itself. We can't just give you the name, but what I can do is, like, let's say, again, I'm gonna use Mrs. Smith, you're offering this, our staff can go to Mrs. Smith, say, "We have this opportunity, would you like us to reach out and get this contact for you, or would you like the information so you can contact it themselves?" You know, so, you know, it's, it's, it's something we very much respect, so like, we won't go do it for like Natalia hairdresser or something, but emergency-type things, yeah, things that are really important and can help the seniors themselves, we have no problem relaying all that information to them, and give them handouts or whatever. That's something I've always done, because, again, our goal is to keep them as independent and as safe, you know, quality-of-life way, not just keep them in a, in a home when they're not doing well, or not getting what they need, and they're kind of miserable, that's not when, for anybody, you know, so...
So can you put her in touch with our welfare person? Just so...
Well, not only that, but the fire department?
Yeah.
Because I know that they do well checks, but this is another way for them to reach a population that they don't know about.
Someone's there.
And, and I don't know how they feel about it, but I will tell you, in some cases, we've also turned to like fire departments, a good example, where for, we're seeing someone's like in a bag winter, not ever getting shoveled out, fire departments have sometimes helped us, like, 'cause they also want to be able to get in easy. You know, so we've often coordinated with different police departments, fire departments, things like that, and we have no problem send the, you know, my contact information to anyone you think could, you know, help this population out.
So how, what is your outreach program like? I mean, how do you know where these people are, or how do you contact them?
Well, for the most part, right now, first of all, I am an outreach coordinator that goes out and does all the assessments of their homes and stuff like that. Biggest percentages of our people right now, I would say, and Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, this is like coming from other agencies, Service Link, not 211, hospitals, things like that. There is some family connection, stuff like that. I, again, have not just, at this point, gone and like beat the bushes ourselves in any way. I don't know how much more I could afford to do yet until I get more revenue, so over time, we'll do that. I just recently worked on, working on rebuilding our website, and I just recently did our brochures, which I'm hoping to get printed up and get out to like the welfare directors to have and stuff like that. So we'll have more of that out there. But I also got to, you know, be careful, 'cause I, I don't want to overextend ourselves and be able to help nobody, you know what I mean, and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm kind of building that pot slowly, but obviously, we're not turning anybody away, we have no waiting list or anything like that, but I, you know...
So, so if there was an individual in Lee who needed your services, could they contact the welfare director?
Yeah, they could contact them, they could, you know, you know, I can make sure she's has, I believe you already have my information. Hopefully, soon the, the web will be up, but also, if you called Service Link or the 211, we are registered there, so, or if you go on Meals on Wheels America, we're also on their site, they'll, they'll listen to that, so... But I, I think outreach is something, over time, we still could do better with it, I guess is my bottom line answers your question. I just need to take it steps at a time here right now.
A lot of home care agencies too, also are aware of Meals on Wheels and the firm, so they have a home care company too.
Did you have a question?
Could I, could I ask a rather specific question?
Oh, sure.
Do you, do you try to work with elderly people who may need something like the wrist button or a pendant, I don't know, Life Alert or whatever it is? I know of probably six elderly people who have never even considered that, that really should have it, and I'm just wondering what the mechanism is for pushing that along, whether it's something like what you folks do? Is that one of the things that you really look for?
Well, we don't necessarily, we don't help give that to them or anything like that, but what I have done in the past, I haven't done it since we've been here, is like Life Alert would give us brochures to hand out to them, and we would pass those along to them, but to try...
I would tell you that, that, that one of the problems of that is, that's as far as it goes. Somebody needs to follow that up. Somebody needs to follow that up. My mother was a perfect example of that, where she had, we got her, she was ninety-seven years old, living by herself. We got her one of those things and some of you knew my mother.
You set it up.
But, so she just happened to fall before we had the ice storm in two thousand and ten. She fell off her chair because she was trying to do something and cracked a couple ribs, laid on the floor for two hours in the morning. And finally got to the phone and called nine-one-one. She had a thing on her wrist. And so when I got there, I said, and the fire department called me and said, you better get over here, your mother fell. So I get over there and I said, why didn't you just push the button on your, oh, I have to send out the check all the way to Iowa. It would take them all day to get here.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tommy says, yeah, but you kind of have to walk them through that thing.
Yeah, you do.
Somebody, somebody's gonna do that and I'm wondering who that is.
When our drivers, right. Yeah, I was gonna say, it could be another agency. But however, with that, when our drivers are aware of certain things, like, and that's usually something like a family member, like yourself, asks us to kind of keep an eye for this or, or, you know, mention this, like, we can't go and give them medicines, for example. But if a, a, a family member said, you know, would you mind reminding my mother when you drop off the meal to take her noontime medicine? We can do that kind of stuff, you know, so it, it kind of depends on what you specify. But we do try to work with families where we can and, and help things along. You know, sometimes there'll be requests from families that are maybe too complicated. Because like a route, a delivery route could have thirty people on it. And you're trying to do it in that two-hour window when they're expecting you and keeping the food hot and safe. So you can't do a lot of stuff, but we try to do, you know, different things that can kind of help with that. Common, when I always joke about this, often clients will have a jar of the oddest things, whether it's pickles or, you know, something that maybe a family member dropped off that they liked, but they can't get it open. And I don't know why they don't want to tell their family member that, but they'll ask the driver to open the chat for them so they can have it later. You know, so different little tasks like that we'll do, but it, like I said, it depends on, there are some limitations as rules with our contracts and things, you know, like, like I said, we can't give medicines or anything like that, but we can remind them, did you take them? So, yeah, there's possible.
Which is really good.
Yeah. And, like I said, the other thing is just, yeah, if, if we know something is a concern, like we just recently, I'm trying to be specific, but a daughter had called us because there was something going on with her mom. And she asked us, let her know right away if we see, and I don't know if you remember.
She doesn't answer the door.
Okay, she wasn't, she was coming right to the door, okay, that was, because there were some things going on. You know, some people, we might like go to the next person before we check, but this woman had a particular, you know, crisis thing going on, so like, the minute, the minute we know, so. You know, so we do different things like that to try to help.
Okay, thanks.
So, any other questions or any other? Well, I appreciate your time and I thank you for giving me an opportunity. And, no, hopefully around helping still.
Thank you very much. Are you both with Oyster River?
Oh, no.
No.
No. I'm with Child and Family Services with Oyster River.
Sorry. So why don't we do you first because yours is complicated.
Oh, his is complicated, mine is complicated.
No, it is, it is. There are a lot of questions and, yeah.
My name is Paul Soler and I'm with Child and Family Services. This is my, I'm relatively new on the job and this is my first town funding, so I hope I can be brief and concise and answer your questions well. Just a bit about Child and Family, I think we've been here before, so you've probably heard it. We are a statewide agency, we have thirteen offices across New Hampshire. We provide care from neonatal counseling for pregnancies to elder care under the, who are impoverished and at home. We really, as an agency, pride ourselves, we sort of like to fill in gaps where we see them. So for example, we run a homeless youth program, but it's from ages thirteen to eighteen, because that's a non-serve population. Some of the kids older than eighteen have some options, but we find that's a real at-risk population. We just started a human trafficking project here in New Hampshire, which would shock you that how prevalent it is even in the state. We had just started it this year and we've already had thirty-four cases. Yeah, it's discouraging, but this is something I think we're the first in the state to do. And some of the other agencies aren't addressing or will address or try to address. Specifically, we, we serve over ten thousand people, again, at various age groups. We pride ourselves in trying to do at-home care, so eighty percent of those people are, we serve in their communities or in their actual homes. We cover almost a million miles doing that. And ninety percent of our population, to our estimate, is under the poverty level, which I think is about twenty-four thousand for a family of four. I forgot, a family of two, it's seventeen, I was trying to do it, or something like that. Especially elderly who are making under that poverty level. So then, turning specifically to Lee, the three services we've offered, Citizens of Lee, are family counseling services, transitional living and homeless youth services, namely the homeless youth services of that, and adoption. We served eight people from the town of Lee last year for what we estimate to be about three thousand two hundred dollars or a little less than three thousand two hundred dollars worth of servicing. Just a word on the adoption program is preparing parents for adoption, like home specs. Here, I'll just read, I'll read from this sheet. Home specs for domestic adoptions, consultation and mediation, post-adoption search, reunion coordination, including counseling and support for birth parents, adoptees and siblings. We also, one of the other services is family counseling, which helps children with behavioral challenges, problems in school, problems related to divorce, step-family adjustment, family violence, relationship conflicts, emotional complaints, stress, self-defeating behaviors, addictive behaviors, loss, trauma, anxiety. So it's, again, it's trying to get to the kids before they could become a homeless, that, that would be ideal, that's a home-based service. Try to get to the kids before they hit the streets. And finally, again, we have a youth outreach center in Manchester and then we run a van service in Seacoast. So according to my records, there was one youth from, and that would be thirteen to eighteen, from Lee who used our services. I don't know if that, I can't tell you, probably could find out, I think I could find out, whether that child made it to Manchester to use our youth homeless service there, or whether, you know, that's an interaction with the van service we run around Seacoast. Because obviously, Seacoast is too large to do one central thing and Manchester, they, those are the two congregation points for homeless youth to that age, Manchester and the Seacoast. And so we have actual physical presence in Manchester where they can get food, shelter during the day, food, it's like a shower, they can do laundry, they can get GED training. Again, like the other agencies, you said, you saw, we leverage other supports, so they're given a full intake form, which assesses mental health, substance, potential substance abuse. And then we try to, we access other services to address those problems as we can. Again, specifically for the eighteen to thirteen, thirteen to eighteen populations. Just looking at my notes quickly. I mean, that's more or less in a nutshell, it's complicated, there are three big programs, but, and our request of Lee was the same as last year, which was one thousand dollars.
How would somebody in Lee find out about you?
Well, I will tell you, and I would give it to you. We just had a woman studying film and she decided she really was interested in our homeless youth project. She made a whole film about it and I just saw it. I, I don't know if this is the answer to your question, but there's incredible word of mouth among these kids where to go. And we even have a nickname, we're called the four oh four. And it's kind of interesting, we used to be on four oh four Chestnut Street and we moved to Lincoln Street, but the kids, and this is ten years ago or whatever, they still refer to us as the four oh four. So I'm just, my immediate impression is.
It just seems like such an odd connection for, there's so many others, it's such a long distance for a homeless kid that it's interesting that they.
I think it's really word of mouth and I think you might know, you know, and I've been to the center and, you know, I met, I was just there showing somebody around and a kid, two kids were in the parking lot and while I was waiting, I was talking to them and one had been there since he was a little kid and he had brought his friend, you know, who had never been there and this was the first time and they thanked me for the service. Yeah, I can't specifically answer, we don't advertise, obviously. We do do youth, we do outreach, so you'll see our people in the streets of Manchester and in the vans around Seacoast of red jackets and all, emblazoned with outreach on the back. And they go, I think somebody, the lady earlier said they go out in the woods, they look, they know where these people congregate, where these homeless youths, and they seek them out. And certainly in Manchester, it's under bridges, it's in corners of the city. I talked to one kid once who, they were renovating a hotel and they were doing it floor by floor and he'd stay on whatever floor was under renovation because nobody was staying there and then he'd slip out before the workers came in. So this is, and they know, our outreach group know, you notice, they hear it in the center and then they go look for the kids. And what they try to do is, is, you know, it's a community effort, we got a nice food donation from Walmart, for example. And what that allows us to do is distribute food to the kids who don't want to be approached as they're on the street with the offer, why don't you come in and get some services? And the other thing, I think the outreach center specifies is it tries to come up with their families, it tries to assess what the situation is and then it gives them an opportunity and it has private phone booths so that they can call their family.
You said in the beginning that you give them shelter during the day and then what do you do, take them back to the Seacoast at night?
No, 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 I'm sorry, we treat the kids in the Seacoast from the van and the van only, the kids who are in Manchester from the day center. So I'm not sure ours is intended as five or six. And they can have shelter during those times, but they leave at night. And I asked the counselor, what happens to them then? And she says, I don't know. New Hampshire doesn't have a homeless shelter for, a permanent homeless shelter for these, the kids of this age group. There's a permanent facility. And then you don't want those kids going to the eighteen-and-over facilities because then their, their new behaviors could become all more entrenched and they're exposed to a population eighteen and up who mastered these skills that you're trying to keep them from. But, but yeah, the counselor says, after six o'clock, we shut the door and out they go.
Is there any estimates on the numbers we're talking about basically?
Oh, the kids in, in, out of the youth center? We, I think we serve like five thousand kids come and go, it's hard. And I, that's, that's also, that's repeated kids. And I think that's also the street, that's also the youth, the van outreach. So they'll hit a cluster of kids and they'll talk in it that way. I can try to get, that's a number I ought to know, but.
I'm just trying to get a feel for how bad it is.
Well, you know, a lot of it's temporary, I think. A lot of its pure true homelessness is, you think of it, a lot of it's running away for a week. And that's, that in a lot of ways, starting with counselors, one of the populations you want to hit, you want to hit the kid who's just gotten mad, is just left for a week for whatever temporary reasons, you need to get them back in. And that's a lot of the work they do. And so then they disappear and we don't know that it's a success story because we've merely been the place where they bottomed out. You know, and then some kids, obviously, again, having gone there a couple of times, have real, either addictive or mental health issues and we, you know, we can point them in the right direction, but.
Have you seen, one of the things that the state, I think, is starting to do in terms of addressing the mental health needs, there's been a reduction in terms of the number of beds and stuff like that, but they seem to be turning that around. Are you seeing any of that from your counselors in terms of better services available to these kind of people?
I can't answer that question intelligently. I don't, I don't know. I don't talk to the counselors well enough. And so for example, the, the mental health counselors, we have, we have two social workers who do intake and do help with some mental health counseling, but they're not, excuse me, they're not therapists, they will, they'll refer to state, to state. And I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard them talk about the resources being greater or less than.
Okay.
Anybody else? More questions now?
All right, well, thank you for your consideration. Oh, that is, that would be useful, right? It's present for you. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Last one?
Last one, sorry.
No problem. I'm Matt Clode, you know, I'm in the Oyster River Association. Pretty sure you guys know what we do, but, so I guess, you know, where would you like to start, would you like to know?
Oh, yeah, this is a tricky one.
Where's his?
They're actually.
They're in the comcoms.
They're in the comcoms, thank you, because they're kind of.
Are they a commission?
Recreation.
Recreation Commission.
So they're right before the revenue data tag. Everybody's getting used to our new system.
There's a lot in there, so I can imagine it took a little while, but I'm gonna have to check the right spot.
So how are things going with O R Y A? Good?
Pretty well. We've had a, we've had a eventful year, a lot of changes to the organization. It was my full year, first full year as the director. I started probably two months before this meeting last year.
You were just here.
Brand new, yep, brand new. And you're only really a veteran until you've been there a full year, because every sport, every season has its own set of volunteers, its own set of challenges, its own set of facilities, et cetera. So I've just finished my full year and starting to get into the, into the start of the second. So a few of the highlights from this past year, build a brand-new website, ground up, which has been really well received from the community that uses it, a lot more user-friendly. It is mobile-friendly as well. We started a new communication platform that we utilize to create and send out to the community and that's on a set schedule. So we're trying to avoid bombarding people's inboxes, we're trying to more efficiently share information relevant to the organization. We've also decided to move ahead with a coach and volunteer communication tool that we preset for them, it's called Team Snap. It's mobile-related, so all of our coaches and volunteers have a much easier way to communicate with their participants, their players, their teams, their groups. We have added a couple of programs this past year for the first time. Field hockey, amazingly, had been part of O R Y A in the past. We started this past spring and it was successful, forty-four girls playing for the first time. Did ultimate frisbee program for the first time over the summer months. I just recently met with them and I'm trying to convince them to do a fall and a summer program. Summer around, you know, in our communities, there's a very high rate of vacations. So I think they're missing out on some of the population that they could service by offering at that time. Fall is the high school ultimate frisbee season, if you didn't know that they actually have one. You know, Oyster River does have an ultimate frisbee group. Basketball saw a huge increase last season, a hundred more kids than they had ever had. And for an organization that services Durham, Lee and Madbury consistently, that's a statistical anomaly there. So it was a very, very tricky situation to have. We utilized almost every second of gym space midweek that we could have access to. And that was with doubling up practices, so two teams would be in one court, et cetera. Baseball went well, we had two major teams this year, we hadn't had two in a long time. Developed a new MOU with the town of Lee, we have a new MOU with University of New Hampshire. I don't know if you saw the Foster's article, but they received a donation to create a soccer and lacrosse-specific turf facility next to their football stadium. And as part of that donation, Oyster River Association will have a guaranteed number of hours for usage on that turf for our programming. So that's huge, especially in the spring season when turf is worth its weight in gold and we don't want to get out and do irreparable damage to Little River Park or Stevens Field or the Masway Fields or Tivitt's Field or wherever they might be. Turf is what makes up for that and allows our groups to get out and play before fields are ready. Dance program that was run by the NIH dance team for the first time, that was really exciting for the kids, there was something in there. So they had a whole different feel of dance than our typical hip-hop class. This season, we're launching a new approach to hockey, which I'm kind of excited about. My nephew's kind of getting into hockey and I always saw hockey as one of those programs where there's a huge cost before you even know that your kids like it. Got to get all that equipment, ice costs a lot and it's usually a long commitment, so last year, I already. So last year our choreo program was a nineteen week program, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for, you know, six to eight year olds. You don't know if they like it then, so. Yeah, so we're, well, I didn't turn anything away, you know, it's really up to twelve year olds, but that's the, kind of the core group, those eight, nine year olds. Um, so this year we have a program that is, uh, two, well, two and a half days a week. Alternating Sundays is their, kind of their cross ice game scrimmage type thing. Um, but we're also starting an intro program. And that's just once a week, eight weeks. You can choose to do it again for eight weeks if you'd like. We have an equipment share now, so hopefully we can outfit most of the kids with equipment, uh, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars. So they can probably try hockey. I mean, we want to get, we want to expand our girls program. We only have a U fourteen girls team. We want to have younger kids participating, especially females. So I'm hoping that that can kind of whet their whistle and then lead into the rec program, um, which is a little bit more like your classic youth hockey program. Um, those are kind of the, the big pluses from this past year. Um, that is in addition to me kind of learning every sport as we go. Um, and it's, uh, it's been a busy one, but it's been great.
Can I ask why you don't have tennis or golf?
We do actually have tennis. We have a tennis.
Oh, I didn't see it. I didn't see it on the list.
It's a smaller program. Um, it, it's one of those that kind of goes up and down. You really need a pied piper for those individual sports. Um, and we, we have, we have a great coach, but she's dedicated to the high school. She's a high school coach, Nancy Boltley. Um, so she kind, she volunteers to do it before or after her high school, um, sessions. And it's, it's kind of like, if you don't have a champion in the community for those specific age groups, it's tough to get their attention and to really get them in. Kind of like figure skating with same situation, figure skating is one of these. We have learned to skate, it's always great, but not specific to figure skating. So, um, she was sick this past Monday, they didn't have it. Weather's always tough with tennis, but we do have it. We had a summer program as well. Golf is one I've, I've been considering. Um, the closest course is Rockingham. Um, it, I'm unfamiliar with youth golf. I picked up golf maybe six, seven years ago. So it's a learning curve for me as well, but it's something that I, I would absolutely do if we begin to find those, those local champions for us.
Questions?
If you're asking questions.
We are.
Can you run me through, and I'm just looking at the top numbers so you can explain, but in terms of the number of people you're going, you're serving between sixteen and seventeen, looks like it went down about five percent. But you're asking for almost three percent increase, so are there less people coming, but your expenses are more? What's the, what's the, what's the difference?
So there, we, while we have these numbers in here for two thousand and seventeen, um, part of what was new for us is a registration platform. So we now, we were using this system called Blue Sombrero before where every individual had an account. You can, you can go in and some people liked it, but the majority did not. So I've transitioned to what we call EZ Facility. Um, it's kind of a, you want to do a program, you sign up for that program. There's no account. Sign up and pay, it's done. Um, so in the transition between those two programs, it's sometimes difficult to capture every registration that we had between those two and between the seasons. For example, our lacrosse program had the majority of registrations in Blue Sombrero, but yet we still had registrations in EZ Facility. Same with our soccer programs and a few others. So those are pretty close, uh, but they might not be exact. So the, the increase is, you know, obviously just a request. Um, but it is, we are looking at some additional expenses for this upcoming year. We just lost our assistant director in August. I've been on my own with some part-time help. We were, I was very lucky enough to have our intern, summer intern be able to stay on. And it was his third summer with us, so he's very knowledgeable. And he has a little bit of time between his, uh, upcoming new full-time job after school.
So is the Blue Sombrero, the, the people that kind of took your information and didn't let you get it back out?
That was the one before that, actually, yeah.
Oh, that was the one before that?
I think that was called Sports Manager. That was before my time. But boy, I heard the horror stories from that one, from our assistant director that previously left. So, um, with me being on my own, I've been relying a lot on our accountant group, which is called Lexi Management out of, out of, uh, Newmarket. And her husband, um, with my liaison there, her husband used to be the, uh, board president or the director for ORYA way back, maybe ten, fifteen years ago. So they have a historical, um, perspective on the organization. But when I reach out to ask for things, uh, they're on the clock. So that cost has kind of gone, gone up quite a bit. Um, I believe that when they hired me, they made a dedication to try to get somebody that was going to bring them to kind of a next level, which I'm working towards for sure. And I think there was a salary increase there from their previous director as well. So that's where some extra.
So is that the reason, one of the things that was just kind of popped out. So on the page five, in the end, it says online transaction expenses, well over thirteen thousand dollars.
Yep, and that's actually.
Is that a fee that's?
Yeah, so when you have, um, any company that does payments online, there are merchant account fees and transaction fees that go along with that, usually get hit twice. Um, each credit card has kind of their own percentage that they have. And when we transition from Blue Sombrero to EZ Facility, we are actually saving money on those online transaction fees. So I am actively trying to push everything to be online as much as possible, either through mobile or through their desktops. So we have a lot less, um, payments that we receive by check or cash or in person now. So while those numbers kind of go up per transaction, we're actually doing better than we were with Blue Sombrero.
Thanks. More questions?
Who was it right before you? Was it Mike and Nick still, or?
Nick, Nick was the previous director. Mike Gamash left before Nick did.
Okay.
Nick left, leaving poor Ashley, the assistant director, on her own for maybe six or eight months before they hired me. They had put an offer out to somebody. He had actually, their, his current company had upped his salary. So he decided to stay and, you know, my wife and I just say it was, it was meant to be because they had already put an offer out. Uh, and then I came in after that, so.
Initially, way back, I was working with, uh, even back with Kathy Pepler.
I've seen that. I still get mail with that name on every once in a while.
Mike and Nick, and I helped run the rec hockey program and the travel soccer program.
Fantastic.
Few years. But now my daughter's twenty-one, so.
He's aged out of the program.
Aged out, yeah.
So you'd be a coach now?
I could be one of those ones that does it even though your kid's not involved, but I'm too busy.
How many of you participate in these programs?
The vast majority is kindergarten through eighth grade.
Yeah.
Um, every once in a while, we will, um, you know, kind of service the community when they ask for it. So as an example, in the spring, um, we have a lot of people that come and want to play soccer in the spring that are high school age players. Because, uh, fall is high school soccer season. So they still want to continue. We had a U nineteen teen, U nineteen boys team this past year. We had a U seventeen boys team this past spring. And we had a U seventeen slash eighteen girls team as well. And they all came to us. We don't want to play for Seacoast United. We don't want to play for these other local clubs that, you know, might have either ulterior motives or cost a bit more, um, so they come to us and, and ask if we could service them and we did.
So this is a question that used to get asked every year, so I'm going to ask it again. When you report that five hundred and seventy-eight kids, um, participated from Lee, is that five hundred and seventy-eight unique individuals? Or one kid might have been in three programs, so that counts as three?
It's the Henzy question.
Yes, in memory of Bill Henzy.
I actually have all of those different variations in demographics. So this number represents, uh, participants. So it could, if Matt participates in soccer, baseball and hockey, that would count for three.
Okay.
So I also have access to households that participate.
Yeah.
And I also have access to households per sport and then add those up in terms of all of the sports together as well. So if, uh, one family has three kids in soccer, that would be one. But if they have three kids in hockey, that would be one as well, meaning two. So there's multiple ways to look at your, your numbers. The reason why we have those numbers there is because that's how many kids are actually participating in those sports. And you kind of have to look at it from an overall participation rate.
This is registrations, not heads.
Exactly.
Are you still in the, used to be the court on the corner there across from the?
We are.
And it's nice that we didn't have another, I don't know, padlock gate, like water gate. Remember last year when you came, oh, padlock issue?
Well.
So that was good that we didn't have that.
Right, no, we cut, that we know of, no one cut the locks.
Well, just as past weekend. Oh, no problem, no, for just the past weekend.
Uh-oh.
Same request, UNH Lacrosse, we've got a girls, you've turned, can we borrow four goals today? Same person was going to go and pick them up. And I said, I was, don't you dare go over there before I get there. So I went over, I made sure that it was all set and then they actually didn't end up needing them. They, uh, they purchased their own, so they didn't need to borrow.
At the last minute?
Yeah, so.
Curiosity about, about the sports. You've mentioned a number of new sports and a number of sports that have seen some growth. What's, what is not doing as well?
Um, some of the, most are, are pretty consistent in terms of, you will look at, it might be down a handful, but it's not like, it's, it could just be your, your demographics and how kids age out before they age.
Cause you're down about five percent in heads.
Tennis is definitely down, um, overall, if you look at over the course of a year. Um, lacrosse was up, soccer is usually pretty consistent, baseball seemed to be fine. Um, hockey's down a little bit, um, in terms of our travel numbers. Our rec numbers haven't come in yet. We're actively registering for those now. Um, we'll actually no longer be doing yoga this upcoming year. Um, dance overall was probably a little bit down. Football was actually up. Um, we only did our track program one time this past year and it did not go well. Um, we were all excited to be using the high school track. Um, and they had so many middle and high school lacrosse teams that we couldn't get on that track until seven, seven thirty. And that's too late for the, the age groups that we use. At the same time, UNH was redoing their turf field in the stadium. So that was construction zone. Their track wasn't available either. So we had our track program running at, um, Woodridge Field on the grass during baseball practice. It was not ideal. So, and we only were able to do that one season instead of the two that we normally do.
Which is curious, I figured something had to.
And we did volleyball for the first time too. So a, as I'm thinking through it and remembering the numbers per sport, um, you know, that's kind of where it comes into that point that I made before. I don't know how one hundred percent accurate those numbers for two thousand and seventeen are. Um, because I'm, I'm thinking through and most programs are either the same or up slightly. With the exception of some of those smaller ones.
Thank you. More questions?
Thank you.
That's it?
Sorry, one other question.
Uh-oh.
Are you looking for an assistant director?
We are in the final stages. So I've, uh, convinced my board to actually hire two people. Um, I think that's going to make the world of difference for ORYA. So I look really closely at what the major roles responsibilities are to make the organization run, run well, efficient and for us to be able to continue moving forward. So, um, we finished our interviews yesterday morning for two positions. One is office intern and communications coordinator, and one we've program director. I would act as kind of like an executive director, um, dealing with all of our communities, looking after bigger picture projects. Trying to find, uh, corporate sponsorships of any kind, figuring out there, looking at grant writing, um, any major issues that we have. Trying to create new programs. Program director would obviously make sure that programs are being set up. They're, um, on track, registrations are there, coordinators are there, um, coaches are there, facilities are there. And then office intern and communications, which might not seem like an important job, is just as important in my opinion because they're the ones that connect everything that we do to the community. Um, and help really shape our public perception, which, um, as you probably know, perception is, you know, most of the time, um, what people completely believe. So, um, and that's going to be the, the face of the customer service as well. So the person answering the phone, answering the generic questions, um, and all of being a lot of people's first point of contact with an ORYA. Um, so I'm super excited and hopefully, uh, we'll have some offers out soon.
And all the coaches are volunteers?
Um, the vast majority. So every once in a while, um, a sport will hire, um, quote unquote pro coaches that can provide services that we don't have the ability to. So a perfect example is a goalkeeper coach for soccer right now. They were supposed to have it tonight. I closed the fields, had to tell the goalkeeper coach that they couldn't come. Um, same thing for hockey. We have a, a few skills coaches come in during the year, skating coaches. Um, you know, skills coaches, you know, kind of their stick handling, uh, shooting, things like that. And then goalie coaches for hockey are worth their weight in gold around here. Um, basketball, um, I put in the budget this year for them to have some pro coaches come in for basketball as well. Um, for, you know, varying age groups and varying different skill, the sessions. And then we sometimes will utilize quote unquote pro coaches for our coaching education sessions or coaches meetings at the beginning of the year and try to set them up for a successful season.
So those are more like coming in for a clinic or whatever?
Yeah.
But for your coaches of the teams?
No, no paid coaches.
They're all volunteers?
Yep, they're, so the only exceptions to that when we can't find would be like our, our dance instructor, our hip hop dance instructor. He's a paid coach. He's that super specialized. Um, he had been doing it for ten years.
Still?
Still Sean.
Still there Sean?
Yep, still Sean Middleton. He's been doing it forever. Um, the UNH dance team this year has actually, it's a different captain. I usually handle, deal with a captain. Of course, we only did it for the first time last year. They've asked, any chance we could get something? Cause the only thing that they fundraise for is their nationals trip, their nationals competition, and that's what they want to go to. So I'll probably relent and throw them something for their service, um, for doing it, cause, you know, it's such a specialized thing. Um, besides that, I can't think of any other coaches that we consistently pay outside of skill specific coaches that a specific sport might want.
Have you had any problem getting volunteers to coach the teams?
Here and there, um.
As you add more and more.
It, I mean, you're always worried.
Things, yeah, sports.
Every once in a while, you'll have to guilt some people into it and that's kind of where every.
That's what we did every year.
Every organization that works with volunteers, you're going to have to do that somewhere. Um, you know, our soccer program, our academy soccer program, which is all in-house, I wish they had some more coaches. Um, sometimes they're scared. They think they need to be, have a lot of experience in it, either as a player or a coach. Really going with the younger age groups. So that education piece where we're moving in this new direction of, of three staff members, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to make that a lot more clear and provide a lot more resources for like curriculums for coaches.
Give them what they can do.
Yeah, it's easier for hockey because we, we utilize the, you know, what they call the ADM model, which is from USA Hockey. But same line with that, hockey, USA Hockey governs the certification of these coaches. And just to be a hockey coach in ORYA, you have to be certified in like three different areas before you can get on the ice. Safe sport so that you are, you know what to do in a locker room situation where people are changing. Um, you know what to do on the bench. Um, and then, you know, obviously your background checks are through USA Hockey for hockey. And then you have to do your age appropriate coaching module. Some are online. But once you get past the younger age groups, you've got to go to mass for two days or eight hours a day and be on the ice learning what they want you to learn. Um, and that's as a volunteer. So we reimburse for all those things.
We went to Dover.
The lucky ones, we have one in Dover, but those rings fall off from every year, so sometimes they transition over.
See if you sign up for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Um, one thing I want to mention that I, um, I might have brought up to you at some point, Julie, or Randy as well. That area, that extra area that used to have the mounds that is, I wouldn't say it's grass that's there now. It's kind of clover, one hundred percent clovers. Um, that's something that we've been kind of discussing, presenting to, uh, Town of Lee that maybe we can help create that as a little bit more of a playable area, knowing that you also want to utilize it for your fair, town fair day. But that's something that we're, we're kind of internally discussing to come to you guys and say, hey, listen, we could give this amount of money, make this a little bit more of a playable surface. I don't know if it'll come through with some changes that we're doing with our, our move to three staff, but something that we would love to be able to support.
Lower Park, where for five, six, ten years, um, there used to just be piles of stone.
Oh, right, over there.
They're gone now.
Yeah, so it's flat.
It's flat, right.
It's a field.
You want to see if we can make it a.
It's not really playable right now.
Field.
Yeah, it's, it's flat and there's green stuff. Wouldn't call it grass. And there's, you know, the lawn that was put down wasn't created to a specific level. So. So, I wouldn't have young kids out there kicking around yet, uh, but now that it's flat and it's kind of a multi-use area, there's a little bit of a track around it. It looks great, but it could be.
You know, the sheep didn't complain.
No, yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
But is it, I haven't been out there, is there still rocks in?
You won't notice them so much, but yeah, there are, I mean, it's.
You can't have.
I wouldn't yet.
Right, right. It'd have, it'd have to have some work.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, we were under the deadline, the current, what was it, the current use, something from the state, we had to get it done and finished.
I wanna say the ETO, but that's not what it was. No, maybe it was the old terrain.
Oh, there is.
The old terrain.
Oh. Yeah, I had to get it finished, so we kind of like took whatever material we had there.
Just spread it.
And then spread it, and then Randy puts a seed on it and did some things, it's kind of squishy when it gets wet, so it's not, so. But yeah, there's a lot of.
When you compare it against the other fields, when you compare it against those other fields, you know, it, it doesn't look good. But for a normal community that doesn't have fields that are like, you know, a Gillette Stadium quality, it doesn't look as good, so we.
You can really see the difference in that aerial photo? That, that was really start, that was really startling. A low, a middle school kid.
Yeah.
With his drone.
Drone.
In the park, did you see that picture?
I haven't, no.
I should send it to everybody, took a picture, and there's the beautiful, you know, multipurpose field. And then there's the other field. And you're like, oh, some sod and irrigation makes a really big difference.
So what could you play on that, just as a practice field?
Right now?
Well, not right now, but in terms of the size.
So it is a little bit of an odd shape, but almost every, every field related sport, so baseball's a little bit different, you know, you put on a diamond, um, has youth sizes, so soccer has youth fields, lacrosse has a youth field, so.
Sideways or whatever.
Exactly, you just fit it in however it needs to fit in, um, but eyeing it, I think you've got a chance for a full-size lacrosse field, I mean, there's dimension ranges that you're allowed to go in, same with soccer. Um, it might be really tight for a full-size, but you could absolutely get a youth or a couple of youth fields there. So, for example, the field right there, that was, uh, our youth lacrosse home field this past season, and plenty of space.
Yeah, they, I don't know if you've been down recently, they put in some trees, in some irrigation.
Last time I was there, uh, Randy was telling me they were just about to do that, so, yeah.
And the other things, we put in a kind of a pump house.
Yep, I saw that.
So there's some other facilities down there that we put in to support the irrigation of that stuff, so.
Yeah, fantastic, yeah, I mean, you wanna try to make improvements where we can and not, you know, put that on the towns to themselves cause we're the ones, even though we're, we're, you know, partially funded by all the communities that we serve, we wanna be able to put our foot into that realm as well. So for example, another thing we're considering is completely revamping the youth baseball fields at, uh, Woodridge Field in Durham. I mean, the lip from the infield grass to the infield is like a ramp. You get a ground ball off of that, I mean, it's, you're down, they get it in a glove, right into the, it's getting dangerous out there.
Erosion or whatever.
Couple things, actually, I met with a couple companies to give me quotes on what it would cost to really redo those. You, uh, over the course of years, you put this special mixed material on the infills. Um, if you're a lot of money, you use this special clay and infield mix, but if you don't, you gotta use these bags you can get at the, uh, you know, any agway store. And that's for like the mix, that it kind of absorb the water a little bit, but give you a good ground ball surface. Over time, when they drag those after every practice, it pushes that into the grass, and then the grass just keeps growing through it, so a mound just keeps building and the grass keeps growing through it. So that's how those, those mounds and lips are created.
Give those edges and.
Yeah, so, so what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll just re-edge it, so they'll basically cut it out, then re-grade it, um, and put in a, a proper mix on there. Um, the biggest areas are typically around first and third, cause that's where the drags turn. So what they've recommended is instead of the grass coming, like if the base is here, instead of the grass coming here, they'll cut around it and this will all be dirt here, so that you actually have created room for that drag to turn around the base without throwing it into the grass.
That whole field used to be clay way back, I actually.
Uh, Woodridge.
I grew up in Woodridge, and Woodridge developed, and when they, before they built that, it was just like a field and mountain of clay.
Really? Well, maybe that's why it, it holds so much water.
And it, yeah.
It's a swamp out there for the day after a rainstorm, it's incredible.
Rainstorm or whatever, yeah, it's all clay.
That's why.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Not my clone girl, enjoy the rest of the night.
Thank you, me too.
Yes, minutes, did everybody lose a minutes?
No, at least didn't.
Oh, that's all right, you can do it next time, we'll just do it next time.
Um, something I wanna mention about the Meals on Wheels. Um, our current guidelines for funding social service, social service agencies says that if an agency is new to the town, it goes on a separate warrant. That's it, um, so I guess that's something that the board can discuss, certainly it's a, there are guidelines that the board adopted, um, but it would be up to the board, I guess, as to whether they wanna do that with Meals on Wheels this year, or just bring them in.
So new to the town, do you mean this is the first time they've come to the town? Cause they, they leave from, ever.
Let me back up a minute, assuming that they are approved for funding, new agencies go on a warrant article. Um, again, unless the board wants to discuss it and make some different decision, but that's the current social service, the social service agency guidelines that we have, so.
And they don't get any county funding, right?
I, but I don't know.
Cause that's another one of our rules, if they don't, if they get county funding, we don't fund them, cause we're already actually supporting them.
I actually, I don't remember seeing them.
Cap get county funding? Cap gets federal.
Cause it's considered double dipping, we're already paying for their services already. There was a couple places that came to us years ago, and we couldn't consider them because they're in government by the, the county.
Cause we give money to the county, is what you're saying?
And the county supports them.
We don't give it, they take it.
Oh, yeah.
They take it, no, we have to give it to them.
It's not like we have.
But it's considered like double dipping, they've already got funding from the town.
But if the town wanted to give more specifically to an agency, they can do that kind of now.
So whose rule was it that we didn't give to, was that a Town Lee rule, or was that?
It was a rule at the time that, cause that was one of the questions we always asked, you already get county funding, so I don't know.
It was a guideline.
Some guideline to the budgeting process.
Yeah.
That's something you went through, like you've been on the budget committee, I know for years.
Yeah, there was, there was a dinosaur on my given, so.
Are they the only ones that get county funding?
Why don't you know if they get county?
Oh, I don't, I don't assume they are, I mean, uh, are they the only ones that we've seen tonight that would fall in that category? That's what I'm saying.
We don't know whether, we don't know who gets county funding right now.
Do they provide you with financial statements?
Uh, Meals on Wheels?
No, like all of them, do all of them?
Yes, yes, I think it's a lot of paper, so I don't make everyone copies, but if you want to see it.
No, no, I was just wondering if you, the information answered the question.
Well, if you take a look at theirs, see if they get found county funding, and then we can talk about it again.
Are there any other new agencies this year?
No.
Who was it that we turned down last year with the Big Brothers?
Yes.
They didn't come back.
A lot.
We turned them down.
They hadn't done any services, they, they hadn't done any services in Lee.
Oh, really?
Well, if, for example, um, the guidelines, um, require public funding to be used if there's a direct benefit back to the town. So let's take CAP, for instance, the first agency that spoke. If they did not provide the services that they provide to Lee residents, and what'd she say, it was almost sixty thousand dollars? We would have to pay a lot of that, because we are required to assist people, we, it is not, we have to assist people if they qualify, we can't turn people away just because we don't have money, so they went away.
Huge benefit.
It's a huge benefit.
The child and your services is kind of a, as direct a.
Child and family services?
Child and family services. Well, did it say how many of our kids were?
Eight, I think.
Eight families.
Eight families for just one.
But, you know, for example, let's suppose a child from Lee goes to that agency and they provide that kid with assistance, and so that kid does not end up homeless. That agency goes away, that same kid comes to the welfare office, we have, you know, again, we could very well have to provide assistance.
Well, that's why I asked him, how would a kid find you, and I think there's plenty about the outreach in the area.
Plus, some of those agencies, the cap people, they leverage federal funds too, so you're getting more bank for your buck. Giving money to.
I think it might cap this funded by the county also. That's what I was saying, I think it may.
But that's what I'm saying, I will reread our guidelines, I don't remember that being.
We'll take a look, that's just something we did years ago.
From the radio report, everything's, all it says is granted income for seventy million dollars. Well, those guidelines are just set by the Slough, you know, we're in several town meetings.
Right, right.
Yeah, you can change the guidelines.
Yes, yes.
It's not a, cause it makes no sense to not fund them, then have to pay more money out of the town budget to cover them by town welfare than you would have had to pay to the agency to cover them.
Yeah, I agree. All right, anything else this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to know where the ready rides request is, I can't find it.
It's the second to last one in your note.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's way at the end.
Yep. So if you.
Right, it's handwritten.
Right before town clerk, tax collector, it's the next one right there.
Yeah.
Right before town clerk, tax.
Right before that divider.
Right before that divider. Town clerk, tax collector, and go back.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just happened to be looking at.
I was looking at it in the place where the other floor.
The homeless center for Stratford County, last year they asked us for a thousand and eight five hundred, this year they're asking for a thousand this year. They haven't, they haven't served anybody from Lee, what are we doing in cases like that?
Well, they're again, they're there, and we do have, again, we have people in Lee that are homeless. And it's, and especially right now, and I think Mr. Brown, you know this, it is a scramble across the state because there aren't nearly enough beds.
Not even, not even.
Nearly enough beds, yeah, but the need has definitely ramped up because there is such limited affordable housing, especially in the Seacoast, um, but across the state, there's, there's nowhere for people to go. And so people tend to get into the, um, section A housing, and they stay. So there's, there has just not been a turnover, so I understand what you're saying, but again.
I just wanted to point that out to people.
But they're, they're there if we had to send somebody there.
The resources right now are really, really, really slim up there to, to provide to these people. It's unbelievable, it's unbelievable, families are poor.
Twelve, twenty-four thousand dollars.
A dollar, that's impossible.
Just, it, it's impossible, yeah.
So if we didn't give to them and we sent somebody there, they would bill us for it.
Right.
So we're gonna pay for it anyways, one way or the other.
Right.
If we did have.
If we did have some.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that it's less expensive than putting them up in a hotel in Portsmouth, which I will tell you happened recently.
Lee put somebody up in a hotel for it.
It happened, yeah.
There's nowhere, it's an emergency and there is nowhere to send somebody.
Why has it become such a problem?
Because there's no affordable housing, and so that makes the stock of A, affordable housing, that much more desirable.
Section eight housing is absolutely full, there's a, there's a waiting list of years to get into a section eight house.
And there you are, with two houses on the high road, you should feel guilty.
No.
No.
The minorities, you have, uh, whether up the list you go, and.
Is there any other business? So entertain a motion to adjourn.
We just, look at here, we scheduled the town clerk for the next meeting. Conservation commission right before them, so I'm not sure if they'll be here, but.
And remember, there is no meeting next week.
Right, next meeting is the sixteenth, so that's two weeks.
So in two weeks?
Two weeks, no, three weeks.
Are the conservation people? Three weeks, that's it?
Three weeks.
We don't meet for three weeks?
The other thing that Julie passed out was the new, uh, balances on all the commissions and stuff.
Yes.
So what was the correction to the heritage commission, what did they?
Instead of fiscal seventeen, they did not get twenty thousand, they got ten thousand.
Yeah, so really there's thirty-one, but five of it is still the two hundred fiftieth, at least internally designated for the two hundred fiftieth, so they're working to spend that.
The, one question about energy, the money that we gave them last year that they haven't spent yet.
They have to spend.
I think Julie will take care of that.
Well, they got ninety-nine hundred dollars in the current fiscal year.
Yes.
Five thousand of it was earmarked towards the swap shop.
And that will get used.
And the select board allocated that to the building of the new swap shop.
Plus more.
So that's spent essentially.
Yeah, so five thousand of the ninety-nine hundred is spent.
Cause it was eleven thousand in total, something like that, for the whole project?
Uh, almost twelve.
Almost twelve, so.
Is it gonna look like that drying?
She thinks the woods there, I just drove by it.
There's a big garage door to bring in large things on the side, and they're, they're taking the metal building and cutting in half the cash, what is it called, the coupon machine?
Right.
As in what's happened in the other half, so the people that are there volunteering will have a place to go and get warm.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. So they'll, all that stuff that she talked about from the correct fiscal year will get spent.
That is the spent.
Or contracted.
Well, they're, they're gonna pour the foundation soon before it gets cold supposedly, um, but then they'll start the construction part, but they're doing it all internally. And it's not going out to anybody outside.
And what about the lighting project, or they?
Well, the lighting project, um, is certainly more than the four thousand, some odd dollars that they have left, I mean, that's, I looked at those numbers a while ago, let's say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twenty thousand dollars.
To do all the buildings, or to do just this building?
To do this building, and maybe the transfer station, but right now we're really focusing more on this building. Um, because, you know, the electricity bill is two thousand dollars a month. But that's kind of what she alluded to, that the trustees of trust met and voted that provided that they saw that, yes, it was gonna be a cost savings to the town, that project could be funded out of the town building capital reserve.
I see, okay, as a capital A.
As a capital A, yeah, okay.
What else, what else runs on electricity in this building besides lights?
Oh, that's Gargle Coop and Police Department.
The what?
Oh, the pure stuff and whatever.
Plus the kitchen, the refrigerators, the, you know, the snow.
I just don't do that, I just take two thousand dollars a month.
A lot, it's a lot.
And that's with the co-op, if it was an ever-source building, it would be, it would be one and a half times that.
Yeah.
Solar. She was talking about the roof.
Well, yeah, and I actually, I actually, the solar panels on the roof, I actually looked at the proposed PPA, and they're talking about putting solar panels on the roof that'll generate just under seventy-five thousand kilowatt hours. Uh, in fiscal seventeen, yes.
Okay.
In fiscal seventeen, this building used just under a hundred and thirteen thousand kilowatt hours.
So we only have half of this.
It wouldn't even, it would only do not quite three quarters.
It probably depends on what system they put on, like what size systems, I just actually did it at my house. And it does almost all of my, I mean, my ever-source bill went from three hundred and something dollars down to, I think, ten.
Right.
You've got a lot of Gargle Coop in your house.
I got a bunch of, yeah, well.
I mean, we can ask, and we can ask, but I'm sure that there's a reason that the revision. revision engineers could only fit X number of panels on the roof.
They must have calculated, yeah.
So.
Well, it has to be, it has to be, I have solar panels.
You do too?
It has to be a certain direction, and you can't be off angle, so if you're off angle, they won't, won't give you.
Solar would certainly help to have seventy percent of the electricity come from the solar panels, but obviously it's not free.
Right, what's the cost of the solar panels?
Well, I think the cost of the project was, what, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars? But you, there's the funding mechanism for it, we don't need to get into it now, but you own it, you lease it, you pay for it for twenty years, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And is that, is that its life expectancy is twenty years?
They say, I thought they said forty years.
What about?
Mine is twenty.
I know, I was wondering about the roof, too, yeah.
Actually, Solar City, who is, who I went through, funded the whole thing.
Right.
And gave a discount, a significant discount on the power.
Correct.
That's produced. If more is produced, then they.
They took the amount of money that the power company would have given you, so you missed that as a rebate.
Yes, they get the, they get the tax itself.
They get the, they get the money for that.
For a big building like this, yeah.
You gotta look at that very carefully, because it could cost you more, you might have to put more money upfront, but in the long run, it could be much cheaper to get the tax rebate yourself.
Well, except if we can.
I don't know, I know about business.
I believe you can still, there's an energy rebate the federal, the company gets, because you're producing power for them. There's a dollar incentive.
It's not going back to them right away.
My understanding is that the way these are structured for municipalities is we cannot get taxed, we don't pay federal taxes, so there's no rebate to give us.
You'd have to get grants.
I got the wrong term here, I can't think of the name, but power companies get a benefit when you put in solar and sell, because you don't keep any of the solar, you sell it all back to the power company, and then they, but they get a, it's a, it's a fuel usage charge for the green effect, the gas they put up in the air.
That's not how mine works.
You still get that, that's why Durham put in that field over there, because they, that company, Durham did the numbers and decided it was cheaper to let that company take that rebate from the power company than it was to pay the interest on, on the loan that they have to do for the field. So the, there is, and that's a, that comes in this power, you don't get the federal tax rebate that I got, but you do get that, I just can't think of the term off top, but it's a, it's a rebate the power company gets, because they're not putting so much green gas up into the air.
I see.
Well, we got, we got a lot of, a lot of work to do, Larry.
If you do it with co-op, which this builds on, and co-op pays it, because I'm on co-op, they give you a check right upfront for what it is.
Oh, really? And you still get a regular bill?
Yeah, but my, my electric bill last month was fifty-three bucks.
Yeah, that's what mine is. So you've had a lot of garbly goof.
Well, more than just.
Ever-source gives it, pays it a month at a time for X number of years. So it depends on, this building, it's lucky it's on co-op, because the power gives a much better deal.
It's not pointed south, though, is it, this building?
It's not what?
Pointed south, like with yourself.
But there's, there's all sorts of different deals out there.
Yeah.